Good evening, Council. We'll call a meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Thank you. Council, any changes or additions to the seating's agenda?
I have one small item before we adjourn. Go ahead. That's it.
Oh, I'm sorry, one.
Small item.
For committee report?
We'll just put it after the administrator's report.
Okay.
Before adjournment.
Okay.
I'm going to request that we table the consideration of resolution approving construction contract and bond of proposed sanitary sewer conveyance steps improvement, step two. We have had some bid issues. Nothing that the city or engineering, it's a conflict between our bonding attorney and USDA and some interesting conflicts on what has to be posted and what should be posted according to state law. So they're all working through it. And then we've got some, there's a couple resolutions that need to be addressed that we've got to have posted. So we'll table that until our special council meeting on the second.
Okay, very good. We'll do that. Anything else? Okay, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. And in that this evening, we have approval of the minutes from the November 25th council meeting. Approval of the November 29th, 2019 payroll of $133,948.59. Approval of the special payroll of $1,407.79. Approval of the December 13th payroll of $155,785.6. We also have approval of the general obligation debt in the amount of $117,496.25. And approval of the state revolving fund debt in the amount of $62,009.25. Is that $62,000 or $6,000?
That's a mess up right there. Sorry about that.
Got me misplaced.
So we're $6,209? It's just a common, not missing is zero.
Yes, correct.
Okay. We have a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, a resolution of the employment in Park and Rec Department, a resolution of employment in the Police Department, and promotion in the Police Department, an acceptance of the beautification board minutes for October and November, and acceptance of the library board minutes. We have approval of liquor licenses for the Hy-Vee meeting room, for Hy-Vee store, for Hy-Vee C store, for Flamingo Lanes, and for Fairfield RE number 1927, which is the Order of the Eagles. And the claims amount is $328,673.20. Entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Gandy and second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes, abstain from the minutes of the 25th.
Okay. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Council will move to our public appearances. The first is Dan Miller, our Jefferson County Environmental Health Officer, and it is once again radon month. Is Dan here? I don't see him. So we will be proclaiming January 2020 as Radon Action Month. Dan always reminds us about how common it is and how dangerous it can be and what you can do to remediate that situation in your home. So we will present this proclamation to Dan, but entertain a motion to approve the proclamation for radon month, January 2020.
There's Dan.
Oh, hey, Dan. You can come up to the microphone and.
Perfect timing.
Your proclamation has just been introduced. And if you can give us an update on Jefferson County and our condition here.
Well, this will be the 14th year that environmental health has been promoting radon action month. And over the past 12 years, the previous 12 years, it was 50% of the tests were high in radon. So 50%, that's a pretty big number. Last year, it was lower, though. It was 37%. It was good. So again, this year, thanks to the local Kiwanis Club, they've donated funds for 50 radon test kits, which will be given out for free starting January 2nd at the Environmental Health Office. So other than that, there were mitigations done. And it's, these kits are for people that haven't tested before or have had high results in the past. So radon is very common in Iowa. Iowa has the highest rate of homes over the EPA action level for radon.
Okay. And then where are the kits available?
It's 901 North 8th Street, the Environmental Health Department. It's in with the County Highway Department.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dan, Council? If not, entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy.
Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, is Mia Story here this evening? We weren't sure whether she was going to be coming to the meeting this evening. Council, if you've seen her request, there are a number of public safety issues that she wanted to present. So what I'd recommend is maybe if public safety and next time they meet, could look at some of those. And then we can either invite her to that meeting or have a discussion the next time she can attend. Next, we're actually going to table Mr. Glossop's petition until January. He's here with us this evening, but he'd rather work with our new council on this issue. So we'll give him that opportunity. Thank you, Paul. Next, Council, we'll move to our resolution, action items and ordinances. The first is consideration of a professional services agreement for construction services. And this is on the reconstruction of our taxiways, Phase 1 and Phase 2. And this would be with Crawford, Crawford, Murphy &amp; Tilly incorporated. And Mel, would you give Council background on that, please?
So the action item includes two amendments to the design contract and two agreements for engineering during construction, construction observation, review of supplemental drawings. So the two amendments are when the bids came in for Phase 1 and Phase 2, which is the taxiways to the hangars, the bids were rather high, and I believe we received one bid. So the project was decreased in scope in order to fit within our budget as well as the grant budget. And so there is, there's two amendments to the design agreement to revise the project at that stage for a total of $3,027. And then there are the two agreements related to engineering during construction. One of the agreements is for $46,800, and that is for the federal portion of the project, and $25,138 for the state portion, again, of Crawford, Murphy, Tilly's services during construction. So they'll have the onsite person reviewing the work, testing the concrete and things of that nature. So the total amount between the two amendments and the two agreements is for $74,965. And it's within the budget, and a majority of this project is paid through state and federal funds.
Great. Thank you, Mel. So when will this new work go to bid?
So the work's already gone to bid. Drish Construction is the contractor for it. The work has to be done by June 15th, so I would expect early April that they would start the work.
Start the work, okay. Thank you, Council. So we need a motion to approve the amount of $74,965 as additional services for engineering.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mel, if you could give us a report on the remodeling project as final.
Right. So I believe in the September meeting, you accepted the City Hall remodeling project as substantially complete. At that time, the main item of work that was remaining was the exterior sidewalk work. So that is done. Included in your packet is a memo from myself stating that the items are completed, as well as the USDA form from Klinger Associates, and then the construction observation report that listed all of the punch list items that show, show things are complete. So this is a step necessary to finish the project, so we would recommend accepting this project as complete.
Okay. Thank you, Mel. I appreciate that. Council, entertain a motion to approve the project as final.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Motion passes. Okay. And then Mel, we have also accepting as final the Fillmore-Madison Avenue Water Main project.
This project was awarded to DC Concrete and Construction. This was on Fillmore from Main to D and Madison from Main to E, the project that went on forever, it seemed. I state in my letter that one of the reasons for the delay was we had several water main breaks during construction. We actually had seven, so the contractor's working in one hole and the water main breaks right next to him flooding their stuff. So although the project did go on for a very long time, that Steve Redinger and I are only recommending eight days of liquidated damages, these were eight days that we could account where the contractor was working on another site, that the conditions were favorable for him to be working on our site. So we are recommending eight days of liquidated damages, which would bring the final construction By accepting the project as final, including liquidated damages, that would begin the two-year warranty of the project.
Okay. That fall within our contingency, the eight days? Or is that?
The overrun of the project, we will be looking at moving another water main project that we had scheduled for this fiscal year. We'll be moving it to next fiscal year to make up for the overages in this project.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie, Council. Entertain a motion to approve the, and accept the project as final.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay. Thanks, Mel. Next, Council, we'll set a public hearing, and this is for proposed street improvements for 2020 overlays, and that'll be at your first council meeting in January on the 13th at 7:00 PM. Entertain a motion to set the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. And also on that evening, we'll set a public hearing on the replacement of the library chiller, and that's again, January 13th at 7:00 PM for your council meeting. Entertain a motion to approve the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. Next, Council, we have tax abatement application, and that is for Dexter Real Estate Holdings LLC and the really wonderful project that they constructed on the corner of 4th Street in Burlington at 40402 West Burlington. So this would be a commercial abatement of three years. So I would entertain a motion to approve the abatement application.
Move to approve.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, Council, we have a resolution which is amending the public purpose statement. And Aaron, I'm going to ask you to comment on what we have in place and why.
Well, as we've seen in the last couple of years of our audit, the, the state auditors have wanted something more when it comes to our recognition of public, our employees and our employee recognition dinner at the end of the year and during the Christmas holiday. So after doing some research, we put together and added to our public purpose statement to cover what we think covers those issues. We'll see if they like it written, as written this way or in the future, but I think this covers it.
We don't throw a lot of parties, but when we do, the auditor always dings us. So we, and their point is well taken. They just, money that is spent in the city should somehow be within the public purpose. We think that morale is part of the public purpose, so we do celebrate our employees once a year, and we do have an occasional retirement. So we have something on record to point to in terms of our policy. So any questions, Council, regarding the resolution? If not, entertain a motion to approve the, amending the public purpose statement.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. Next, we have an engineering, or rather, an agreement with Rolling Hills Consulting on an architectural survey. Mel, if you could give us background on that again?
Yeah. Rolling Hills Consulting is from Washington. When we have taken bids for archaeological services, they have been the low bidder multiple times. So we did not go out for bids on this one, but rather, we're looking, we're asking them to study a particular property on Highway 1. It has it on here, the, the address. 1307 South Main. They're looking at the architectural features and determining what our next step is regarding doing the Highway 1 widening in front of that property. They're determining the historical significance and doing all of the necessary paperwork for the state historic preservation and helping us jump through those initial hoops. There may be additional archaeology work needed for this project, but this is going to be our largest hurdle as far as environmental clearances on this project. So I'd recommend the agreement with Rolling Hills for $3,000.
Okay, thank you, Mel. Go ahead.
Aren't they the same company that did the step two?
Yes.
Archaeological?
Yep.
Then entertain a motion to approve the survey.
Move approve the survey.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then, Council, we'll move down to the, this will be setting a date for a public hearing on the proposed amendment number three to Highway 1, Highway 34 bypass urban renewal plan. Aaron, can you give a little background on that project? And we'll set the public hearing for?
January 13th.
Yeah, and it's consultation on the 7th at 10:00 AM.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, what we're doing is we're adding the spec building area along with the contiguous property from Highway 1 over to the spec building to add that to the urban renewal area so that in the future, should there need to be a developers' agreement where we would need to use tax increment financing to enhance that development agreement, we can. Not a lot of property added to the area, but it is a significant addition to help us be competitive with the other spec buildings in the state that are available also.
Right, very good. I think it's definitely a wise move, and it is complimentary to what we did just west of that area as well when the hotel was built. So we'll set a public hearing on this for January 13th, 7:00 PM. Entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
So second.
Second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. All right, let's see. In my report, Council, we have, want to set a date for the swearing in of our new mayor and council, and that would take place on January 2nd. We're thinking 9:00 AM. Is that good for everyone? All right, so entertain a motion to set our organizational meeting and swearing in for January 2nd at 9:00 AM.
We'll have a few resolutions with that step two process.
Then, yeah, there's going to be other business, too. So, okay. But entertain a motion to set the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, Council, a couple of appointments to make to boards. One is an opening on the Fairfield Media Center Board, proposing Erica Richards to fill that position. Would entertain a motion to approve Erica for that.
Move to approve.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. And we had a little catch-up to do on the Carnegie Museum Board. There are several folks that have recently joined the board but haven't been through the approval process yet. So this evening, I'd like to propose Dave Neff, Sherry Blowneff, and Chris Small to the Carnegie Museum Board. Entertain a motion to approve those new members to the Carnegie Museum Board.
Move to approve.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. I do have some final words, but we'll save that for our closing. We'll move to our Economic Development Committee report.
We had three issues tonight, or three, three items tonight on the agenda. The first was a request of reimbursement from Jim Danaher for a water line installation in storm sewer to new apartment building, which is the old Loudon Building. And after discussion with them, they decided they'd like to come back after the first of the year. This may be somewhat of a lengthy process, and they wanted to make sure that they were dealing with the same committee and, and that we were all on the same page of it. So we're going to, we're going to table that one for now. The second one was a development agreement with Traffic Devices, and that was concerning a tax rebate on new increment over the current $285,000 at 100% for three years. And we recommended that one for approval. And the third was a, had to do with the urban renewal amendment, I think of what we just spoke of, and then Highway 34, Highway 1 bypass area, which we also recommended.
The, the developers' agreement with Traffic will also come through council as a public hearing and amendments. So the council, the full council will see that as a public hearing and stuff like that. I just wanted the Economic Development Board to be able to see that and then be able to prove it as we move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your report.
Yep.
Our city administrative report?
As you've seen in my memo, John and I were speaking with Evergreen Cemetery. They are losing their longtime caretaker and wanted us to be apprised. There's a possibility that they can't fill that position. So there could be, at some point, possibly some joint work with the city as far as caretaking of the cemetery. Budget season started, and, and part of that budget, the wage study should be, the wage study that we've done in the past should be, the information should come back to us here by this Friday, so we'll be able to move forward on our, our budget. Rebecca and I have been working with Travis Squires as far as investment strategies for the, the fund balances. I've authored a CD to go out to the, or authored a letter to go out to the banks here today for investing $4 million in CDs here in the near future. We're also going to work on possibly looking at a money market account or daily fund with the, with IPAT to invest, to keep, keep money liquid, but also to get a better return on our dollars rather than what we're getting in the checking account now. The last, and probably the most important thing, is as we're moving forward with the fiscal year, we just allocated funds to redo Waterworks Park Road. That is also going to be a main thoroughfare for construction for step two. So the funds that were allocated for step, or for Waterworks Park Road is going to be put into an obligated reserve fund until step two is finished so that we don't beat up a brand-new road. So we're just going to put those funds in an obligated reserve account at this point.
Thanks for your report. Appreciate that. Well, Council, generally, we kind of celebrate the short agendas and something we can get in under 30 minutes, and we've been able to do that tonight. It's a great pleasure to look out and see our longtime city clerk, Joy Messer, here this evening. And I know that, I think it was Joy who was the first to sort of congratulate me after, you know, getting us through a meeting within, you know, a reasonable period of time in our business. So it's, it's great to have you on hand for part of that. There was, you know, wonderful ceremony yesterday out at the Best Western on my retirement, and we didn't know whether that would be the time to make some final remarks or not. I'm glad we've kind of saved it for this evening because we do have all this extra time. So I just, I want to say that Fairfield is a special place with rich history and a dynamic present, and serving in our city government is an honor. Couple more breaths. Our long tradition of 180 years fortunately is defined by responsible governing. My predecessor, Robert Rasmussen, was a good steward of our local government, and I hope I was, and I'm happy to be passing on, mantle to Mayor-elect Connie Boyer. The race that elected you was historic, and it was so because both candidates, including Councilman Michael Hallie, offered a compelling vision and a solid viable choices as candidates. Congratulations to you both for a tremendous race. At one time, the diversity of our community and the diverse interests of its citizens was a challenge to local leadership. I saw within the challenge an opportunity to allow for the expression of new ideas and new partnerships as a means of reinventing our community and adding a new chapter to our history, and one that would unite us as a community with a new respect for that very diversity. Over the past two decades, we have accomplished much, working together, and as a result, have become stronger and recognized for our strength as a community. As elected officials, we have a responsibility to represent the concerns and interests of our constituency. We are also elected for our independent judgment about what is best for our community moving forward. I have enjoyed that process with all of you on this council and everyone that served before you. Our interest as a city government is to provide the best services possible, coupled with the partnerships that have produced new amenities and have guided, and have greatly added to our quality of life and made us one of the most attractive cities to live in, in Iowa. Our population has grown and it is getting younger. We have become a legitimate destination for tourists, and I hope the work continues to grow, that part of our economy. I have referred to Fairfield as a city of 1,000 passions because there is no shortage of interests, ideas, and energy from our citizens to create something new and share it with the community. We have been willing and accommodating partners with businesses and developers that has added to the capital base of our community. We are fortunate to have brilliant business leaders who have grown all sectors of our economy, including manufacturing, finance, commercial, and retail, and we continue to be the entrepreneurial capital of Iowa and the nation for our size. We have led and supported the growth of a renewable energy sector and modeled sustainable practices that have created a culture of responsibility for the environment. We have recognized the importance of arts and culture in our community, and we have made our downtown a core center for community celebrations of all kinds. We have beautified our community and have more access to our natural areas through our trails, parks, and recreational water assets. We worked through the Blue Zones Project to address healthy living and wellness that strengthened our health and remind strengthened our health and remind us how healthy behaviors contribute to the overall good of the community. We have addressed our infrastructure needs with big project and small, and we have stabilized our finances in the most responsible way with cash reserves at an all-time high and bond ratings of A from two rating agencies. The spirit of our city government is based in a respect for one another and seeing consensus on issues before us that are in the best interest of the citizens we serve. Our city personnel are the front lines of that service, and they have done an exemplary job in their roles. They have earned the respect of the community through their friendly service that goes above and beyond in many cases. With all of the wonderful projects we have undertaken as a city, many were done with the dedication and passionate commitment of citizen leaders and volunteers who gave it their all. I'd like to thank some of them now for their committed leadership to our community and remind them that many of their ideas were ahead of their time and will not be forgotten. So some of the people who've championed some of the great projects and things that we've done in partnership with the city, I want to thank Jay Silverman and Ellen Jones for their chairmanship of the 2012 strategic plan moving forward for Fairfield. I want to thank Ron Blair and Ron Myers for their work on the Jefferson County Trail Project, Susan Kessel and Sally Johnson for the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center, Nancy Horace, Susan Kessel, Karen Haring and our current chairs, Susan Gale and Paula Armstrong for the Beautification Commission, Frank Winthrop and Bob and Susan Clower for the work on the Reservoir Commission and the development of our recreational water assets, Stacy and Bill Herlen as founders of the Art Walk, David DuBois and Bert Chinowski who championed and wrote some of our early grants for the Iowa Great Places, Bill Blackmore and Andy Nelson for conceiving and putting on Live on the Square, Connie Boyer and Bob Ferguson as co-chairs of our Go Green Plan, Bill Blackmore and Chuck Espy who championed the Quiet Zone Project, Tom McMahon, Jane McMahon, Joe Carr, Dan Breen, Ken Daley, and many others who championed the Outdoor Pool and Cambridge Sportplex Project, Dick DeAngelis for the work he's doing on his films through Fairfield Productions and All Things Italian, Ken Daley and Chris Estle for the Blue Zones Project, and many others, Ron Blair working with the University of Iowa Planning Department for the Walkway-Bikeway, and our great partnerships with the Chamber Commerce, the CVB, and the Fairfield Economic Development Association on many areas, on our downtown streetscapes, our Civic Center, our airport expansion, our Great Places, Blue Zones, and many of those great leaders over the years, Bob Phipps, Brent Willett, Tracy Vance, Adam Plegge, Nancy Morrissey, Dietra Detman, Darian Sloot, Josh Larrabee, Ruston Lippincott. And also, we have Robert Lyons with us tonight, the work that's been done at the Fairfield Airport, and their stewardship over 25 years has been a real great asset and great addition to Fairfield. Over the past, we've had volunteer committees and grants committees and Go Green Commissions, and currently a wayfinding commission, and all of these things have made great contributions. Our city staff is just a very special group of people through time, and, you know, always has been. And, you know, as a mayor, the relationship that you build with all of those individuals is something that's very special, the long-term friendships, and the memories of the projects, and the great nights that we have here as a council. So our, I'd say thank you to our past city administrators, John Brown, Jeff Clausen, Kevin Flanagan, Mike Harmon, and to Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our city clerk, there are only two of those, Joy Messer, as I mentioned, and Rebecca Loper. Rebecca, thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning Officer Scott Vaughn and his predecessor, Tom Baker, city engineer, our new position, Melanie Carlson, may you hold it for a long time. You've absolutely been one of the greatest additions to our city. In the, in our Ward Department currently, Brittany Trumpold, Amanda Deutsch, and Casey Miller, past police chiefs, Tom Baker, Randy Cooksey, Julie Kinsella, and Chief Thomas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Fire Chief Scott Vaughn, and our past fire chief in my tenure, Ralph Hickambottom, and also just one city attorney, and that is my good friend, John Morrissey. John, thank you very much for all your assistance over the years. In that period of time, serving on the council with Ron Adam, Connie Boyer, Roger Gillespie, Myron Guken, Darren Hamilton, Darren is here this evening, welcome Darren, Tony Hammett, Jessica Ledger-Kalen, Ray Mahdi, Martha Norbeck, Matt Patton, Dick Reed, Pauline Reader, John Revolinski, Jim Rubus, Susan Silvers, Tom Stanley, Tom Toohill, I'm sorry, you weren't supposed to be named yet.
Something I don't know?
No. Anyway, and, you know, the, our current council of Katie Anderson, Doug Flornoy, Paul Gandy, Michael Haley, Martha Rasmussen, Tom Toohill, thank you for the last two years of service and for our many years of service and friendship together. It's been, again, an extraordinary time. Our superintendents for our other areas, our Street Department, Darrell Biscard, and before him, Glenn Schellengoski, our Librarian, Rebecca Johnson, and before her, Jim Rubus, Water Department, Steve Renninger, Carl Chandler, and Dennis Langstrat. In Parks and Recreation, our longtime Parks Director Pam Craft, and Parks and Rec Director Overall, Calvin Todd, Derek Roofcoole, Barry Dodd. In Wastewater, Sean Worley, Ken Goring, Ellen Myers, and Marshall Coleman. We had to really search for that name today to kind of remember that. But I want to, I want to give a special recognition tonight to my good friend who got to serve in, at the beginning and the end, and that's Councilman Tom Thompson. Tommy is finishing his second run on the Fairfield City Council, representing the Third Ward. Tommy is one of those people that engenders a confidence that we are in good hands and that we have the most responsible person in town on the team. Tommy has a sense of large logic and fairness about him that most times is the last word on an issue. He's a gracious representative who cares deeply about our community and especially its responsibility for good government. I am privileged to have worked with Tommy since my first term as mayor and honored to be going off into the sunset with him. But in doing so, Tom, I want to present to you
(pause)
a freshly minted key to the city and a certificate of appreciation for your new services.
Thank you.
Thanks, my friend.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does this fit any further?
Ah, I don't know. You'll have to ask Melanie through all the remodeling whether we change any locks. That'll still fit everything. Okay.
Those are the old keys we don't need anymore.
And finally, my family. I won't lie, if this position takes a toll on anything, it's your family. When Vicki and I were married 37 years ago, this wasn't, this wasn't in the plan. She has been supportive and patient, and I could not have done it without her. My daughter Kelly was here the day I was sworn in, and I'm so happy she flew in to be with us tonight. Love you guys. So I say thank you for the honor. Thanks for the trust you extended me. Thank you for sharing this journey. Fairfield and the people who make it one of Iowa's great places will forever be my heart, and I will always cherish the time I had as mayor. Thank you. I told somebody the other day, I hadn't cried in 30 years, and all I do is cry now. So it's the new me.
Mayor, we would also like to express our gratitude to your family also for sharing him with us, and we've appreciated that. I think Michael Haley has something to...
I'd like to read a resolution of appreciation to Ed Malloy for his dedicated service to the city of Fairfield, Iowa. Whereas Ed Malloy began his public service as at-large councilman from 1992 to 2000, then holding office as mayor for the city of Fairfield from 2002 to 2020. And whereas during his tenure in office, in addition to serving as mayor of the city of Fairfield, Mayor Malloy has served in various aspects to promote the city, including significant involvement in the city being named as an Iowa Great Place, as well as working for the past, to pass Fairfield's first local option sales tax to fund items such as the Law Center, Fairfield Arts and Convention Center, Downtown Streetscape, Loop Trail, First Friday's Art Walk, and many cultural and community events. And whereas Mr. Malloy's involvement in the position as mayor enhanced and affirmed the collaborative spirit of many city efforts. And whereas the city council wishes to acknowledge the diligence and dedication with which Ed Malloy represented the people of Fairfield, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Fairfield, on behalf of its citizens, do commend, honor, and express gratitude and appreciation to Ed Malloy for his 26 years of outstanding and commendable service to the city of Fairfield. I sign this as Mayor Protown.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I've been asked to address the council tonight, and I was doing fine, and hoping I will be able to keep it together. But, Mr. Mayor, I wanted you to know that my father, who I recently lost, told me that men are only good at telling each other how much they mean to each other at retirements and funerals. And I am guilty of it, as you will find out tonight. I apologize. My, speaking of my dad, I was visiting him recently when he was in the hospital, and being a former police officer and listening to me talking about budget time, he began to ask me about the mayor and, and how I was getting along with the mayor, especially at budget time. And I said, Dad, he's just like you. I have never met a man that has as high of integrity as you do, Dad, that stands behind his staff, actually respects and cares for all people, and from the bottom of his heart is truly there to support all the members of Fairfield. And all Dad said is, he kind of smiled, and he said, "Make sure you tell him that." So I'm telling you tonight, Mr. Mayor, and on behalf of a very thankful city full of citizens and the city departments that have followed your lead for many, many years, myself included, I'm proud to call you my mentor, we would like to present you the city key for the city of Fairfield.
Well, the chief and I have that in common also, that our dads were police officers, so was always happy to share that with you, and thank you very much for this recognition. It means a lot to me.
Oh, dear.
Next up.
First, I have to thank Vicki. Thank you for sharing your husband. I wasn't going to cry.
Neither was I. He started it.
Yeah, I was not going to cry. So I'm not going to say very much, Ed, because you already know how I feel. You've been wonderful, wonderful to work for, so supportive. So on behalf of the citizens of Fairfield, the past and the present employees, we would like to present this plaque to you. We thank you for your leadership, your loyalty, your commitment, and above all, making Fairfield a great place to live. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Now I need a proper hug.
Beautiful.
And I...
And it's under the rules.
That's right. And I think we have one last little... Jason has an idea for you.
Oh, boy. Toohill, second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, the same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thanks. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say this one thing.
Yes.
Since I started, I think I'm the only one probably here, other than Joy, who started with you and now ending with you. And again, this is totally impromptu, so just, but I guess the one thing I've noticed within those years, okay, that I don't think it is unreasonable to think that a lot of the growth of Fairfield during that time has gone along with your personal growth, and I have seen that.
Thank you.
And as I told you yesterday, I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much. And council, I'd invite any, any comments for Tom also in his finishing off and the great councilman that he was all these, all these years.
Okay. It was nice to have the break in service, though, too.
Yeah, right.
Well, Tom, I always appreciate your candor. I remember we started working together in 2005 on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board. That was kind of my first step into community involvement, and I looked to you to kind of guide my way. And when I started, the grumpy retired guy was Ron Adam. You've kind of filled that role, so...
I miss Ron. I miss Ron.
But in the best possible way. You can, you can get away with saying stuff that someone like me could not, and...
Only here, Michael. It doesn't work at home.
I'm gonna miss, miss your presence here very much. Thank you.
Very good. Very good.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Meeting adjourned.